Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the mayor and council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs. Today is May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, seven P M. I called the meeting to order. We're conducting this meeting virtually using the Zoom application. All members of the public will have an opportunity to be heard. And in case I didn't mention it, this is a special meeting, and it's also a special meeting to make up for the regular meeting that was prematurely adjourned last week. Madam Clerk, could you please read into the record the statement of compliance?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Law, P L nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one, setting forth the time, date, place, and purpose of this public meeting through a legal notice published in the record, posted on the Borough website and on the bulletin board.
Thank you. Could you please conduct a roll call?
Mayor Cranjack?
Here.
Member DeGugorio? Member DeGugorio? Member Luciano?
Present.
Member Park?
Yeah.
Member Begaz?
Yes.
Council President Ketrubas?
Here.
Attorney Mensch?
Here.
Attorney Administrator Rets?
Here.
Thank you. Please all rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which is one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. We had department reports issued, and anyone on council has questions, please direct them to the Borough Administrator.
Matt, I just still would like to make sure that those are added to the minutes of the meeting.
We're following Robert's rules, so no shouting out. If you want to be recognized, please ask the chair, which is me.
Matt, I'd still like those to be added to the minutes, please.
You are not recognized until you ask properly. Okay, next issue.
Sorry, Matt heard me.
Next issue is public comment. Can we have a motion to open to the public?
Mayor, real quick, if I may, at some point, whatever you like, I would request that we have a closed session to talk about three pieces of, excuse me, four pieces of litigation. We need about fifteen minutes. And if, so we can do it whenever, but I just want to make sure.
Is this the first time today you're asking for that?
Yes.
Okay, why did you ask?
I also think we need to do the statement of compliance before we do anything else.
He did that already. You missed it. And please stop shouting out.
Second.
It's Mr. Mensch.
Yes, sir.
I was around all day. You're around all day. Why are you doing this now?
Well, Mayor, I wasn't around all day. I was doing other things in court, but if you
Other things all day, too.
That's good. So, Mayor, listen, if you'd like an update on the rulings that went against you, I would suggest that we go to closed session.
Against me or against the Borough?
No.
Do them in public.
There's an order that requires you to do a specific path certification because the court did not believe that you adequately searched your records.
That's fine.
Which was one hundred percent true.
If, if you want to go into more detail.
I don't know how Mr. Luciano would know what I did or didn't do. I mean, he's very prescient these days.
I'm sure whatever you do is you're lying about anyway.
Outting out, but I'm cutting out. You don't have the floor. You're not recognized.
That's right. My mic works.
So, Borough, Borough Clerk, we're not going to do this all night. Here are the rules. We follow Robert's rules. If somebody wants to be recognized, they need to ask me to be recognized, and then I will recognize them if they ask properly. Mr. Luciano has now shouted out five times. The next time he does that, you should mute him. And then we will ask him to present what he wants to say properly. But this is not going to be a free-for-all like always, okay? The, the circus that is in Ciano is over. That moved out of town. Okay. Mr. Mensch, you, you did not contact me today. There's no adverse rulings that I'm aware of, so you're playing games, okay? If the council wants to go into closed session, that's fine.
There's a motion in a second.
Okay, so this would be, just to be clear, this would be a motion to go into discuss McMoro versus Borough of Englewood Cliffs, docket number Bergen County L seventy-eight twenty-four. Seventy-eight twenty-four dash twenty-one, Eastwood versus Borough of Englewood Cliffs, Bergen County L six-eight-five twenty-two, Wunsch versus Borough of Englewood Cliffs, docket number Bergen County L ten fifteen dash twenty-two. And we also should talk briefly about Fair Share Housing versus Borough of Englewood Cliffs, Bergen County L twenty-one thirty-eight dash twenty-two.
Okay, I really
Matt, can we also speak about one ninety-three?
I'm sorry, you don't have a floor. Mr. Mensch, I really don't feel like you represent the governing body or the Borough because we have no communication between each other, and, and you, the only time we speak is during these meetings. So you're ineffective as council, to me as mayor, and to the council. You should be telling them before the meeting what you want to do. You put it on the agenda so the public, the public knows what is going to happen tonight. And you don't do that, okay? And you didn't do that, so you don't have the floor. If the council wants to go into closed session, someone make a motion.
I think they already made the motion in the second matter.
We didn't have a vote.
No, you need to vote.
Well, I'd like to have discussion. And my hands up. I don't know how much more proper you could do it.
It's, will the chair recognize me point of order? Okay, that, that's the way you do it.
Where's the point of order?
You're not recognized, and is there
My hand is up, and, and we're, it's supposed to be motion, second discussion on every vote.
To go into closed session? That's fine. If you want to discuss it, we could do this all night.
Well, thank you. I just want to be able to speak.
What is your question, sir?
I don't have a question. I just want to be recognized for discussion because, Mr. Mensch, I'd just like to well, if you would stop talking, because this is what you constantly do. You say we need to be recognized by King Cranjack, but once you give us the floor, you constantly interrupt us. So if you could have the same decency that you expect from us, then please sit there and be quiet. Or as you would say, shut up, like what you would tell us.
You're burning up your
Let us, let us have, I have the floor, so stop chirping in, and be, could be a good boy, and sit there like a dog, and be quiet.
Let's go into
Mr. Mensch, I would like to say that you've been the best representation that any attorney that Mr. Cranjack has ever had for the council, so. But the other thing I would like to say is that I think we should add one ninety-three dash twenty-one as a discussion in closed session, too, please.
Okay, you burned up a lot of your time for nothing, really.
There is no time.
To go into closed session.
Want to pause the recording?
No, we have to have a roll call to go into closed session.
Well, you can do all in favor, but
Well, I don't think that's going to work to me.
Councilmember DeGugorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Luciano? Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Begaz?
Yes.
Council President Ketrubas?
Yes.
Yeah, we got it.
Okay, Ms. Porters, can you read the appropriate language to go into closed session?
Whereas the mayor and council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain confidential matters. And whereas the minutes of this closed session will remain confidential as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act or shall be released when there is no further need for confidentiality as authorized by the Borough Attorney. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and council of the Borough, Borough of Englewood Cliffs go into closed session for the following matters as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act, N J S A ten colon four dash twelve. For McMorro versus D C, docket number B E R L seven eight two four dash twenty-one. And for, I think it's resolution number one ninety-three dash twenty-one.
Okay, can you take the public, please place them in the waiting room? Okay, have a motion to come out of closed session, please?
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you for rejoining us to the public. We have next on our agenda, number seven, discussion and council review. The first item is filling council seat. Did anybody want to discuss that?
And you told, Matt, can you please tell us what the timeframe is for that?
Here's, Mr. Luciano, there's some feedback from your speaker.
Councilman, what was your question?
If we were in person, that wouldn't happen, but is there, can you tell me what the timeframe is? For, I know that there's been a process already started, and I'm just wondering what the timeframe is, like if tonight's a special meeting, if we waited till the next meeting, would we still be under the timeline of being able to act?
So assuming at the last council meeting, the, the council, you know, indicated its intent to fill the seat and started to act pursuant to section eleven of the statute. Under that statute, that, that timeframe, the Republican Municipal Committee has fifteen days to provide names, so that is, we're still within that period. I think they provided the names. But that runs until, I guess, next, you know, next Thursday. The council has fifteen days from there, or thirty days at most, from the time of, to start the process, to fill the seat. They'll pick between the three names. If the council doesn't act, doesn't meet, you know, can't get a majority vote for one of the three names, it would go back to the council, back to Republican Committee to choose one of those three names. So right now, the process was started on May eleventh. So if you applied the normal statutory timeframes through it, it'd be fifteen days to get the names, which is the twenty-sixth. Fifteen days from there to, for the council to act, so you're within, there's nothing precluding the council from acting before that, but the council can act at its next regularly scheduled meeting on June eighth and still be within the timeframe set forth by the statute.
So I just want to be clear that I'm not at all happy with the way this unfolded when William Wu resigned, and there was a vacancy. It wasn't filled by this council. And it was just really political gamesmanship, but at the end of the day, the people who lost were the people who voted for William Wu because they were disenfranchised. And then on what I think was very suspect legal opinion, the council did what they did and left a vacant. Recently, they decided to reverse that vacancy and fill it. Bottom line is, I want that seat filled. This is a six-member council, a seven-member governing body. The, the people of Englewood Cliffs have the right to have a legislature, which is the council, fully functioning and filled. And while the process was tainted, I believe, you know, and that, that's someone else's battle. I, I don't want to fight that battle. What I want is the seat filled, the council full, and the people's work being done.
I'd be recognized, Mayor, please.
Yeah.
Well, since the mayor brought it up, I would like to say that we followed, we followed the legal advice that we were given, which followed the law, which was a new law created by the appellate division in last August of two thousand twenty-one. And the council majority decided to leave the seat open. It's been open since last September, and now all of a sudden, as we know, it's a gray area. In my opinion, I think that once we made the decision to leave the seat open, and the statute is clearly states that you have thirty days, and we acted within those thirty days. Now we're just going back to, for whatever reason, I won't label it, except that now there's a feeling that we can go back and fulfill it. I'm not necessarily of that opinion. I believe that it goes against the statute. But I think that Mr. Mensch has given us excellent legal advice. He's given us both sides of the legal advice, the pros and cons. And publicly, I would just like to say thank you to Mr. Mensch once again, because I think you have been doing an outstanding job, not only for the council, maybe not, you know, the, for, you know, in the mayor's opinion naturally, but I think for the council members and the residents of this town, you've done an awesome job, and I'd like to personally just say thank you.
That's so lovely. It's beautiful. You, you know, here's the problem, though. Mr. Mensch has argued different positions for the
Mayor, is there ever a time that people could just say something, and you don't have to editorialize it?
I did not interrupt you. Mr. Mensch has argued different positions for the same issue within six months, which makes him not a very good lawyer, because we are still the same client, okay? And what he did, and what this council did back in September, October, was anti-voter, anti-resident, anti-neighbor. You left the seat open because it's political to do it then, and now you're trying to fill it, Mr. Mensch. That makes, that speaks volumes about you, your lawyering, and your character. And it speaks volumes for the people who voted accordingly, and it speaks volumes for you, Mr. Luciano, because now you're applauding that flip-flop.
Mayor, let's be honest, instead of your, you know, politicizing and opinionated, that's totally false. Mr. Mensch and your council majority, okay, the council majority
And you were part of that.
Voted, the council majority voted to leave the seat open. Mr. Mensch, Mr., can you, is there one time at one meeting when someone else is talking that you could please sit there and not say anything?
We heard you. We heard you.
No, you didn't, because I'm not done talking. You want to finish, you want to stop me from talking, but see, that's what you like to do, but Mr. Mensch gave us the most up to here. When you're done, let me know, and I'll continue.
Okay, good. So Mr. Mensch has argued two different ways on the same issue.
But you already said that.
Right.
So you're repeating yourself.
And I want to reiterate that, because it makes
But you yell at people for repeating themselves. You would, you would yell at people for repeating themselves. Well, no, Tim, because I still have the floor. I was waiting for, I was waiting for the mayor to finish, okay? So Mr. Mensch, the Mr. Mensch at the time gave us, it was an opinion that came out in August, okay? We did this, the resignation was in September, so we got the most up-to-date legal advice that was out there. Unlike previous attorneys that only espoused the opinion of Mayor Cranjack. Whether it was legal, fair legal advice or proper legal advice, which ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, it wasn't. So I, again, would like to say that Mr. Mensch didn't flip-flop. Right now, the council, you could, if you want to label the council flip-flopping, I would agree with you. But you know what? Mr. Mensch didn't flip-flop. He gave us the pros and cons. He didn't vote, just like you like to say. I don't, when, when, when it's something that benefits you, you'll take all the credit. When it's something that's going to look like it make you look bad, you don't vote for anything. So once again, Mr. Mensch, thank you very much. We'll wait to hear Mr. Mr. Cranjack's editorializing.
Mr. Luciano, I understand what you just said, but can you also explain to the public why you think that taking votes away from voters and disenfranchising them is something that you want to stand behind? Defend yourself on that.
Where, where, where did I say that? I said Mr. Mensch gave us the most
You didn't fill that seat.
Defend yourself that I, you said that you are transparent.
I think every voter and every vote
Everybody, you tell everybody that we get everything that you get, where I have a hundred and eleven emails.
You're deflecting. You're deflecting. I asked you a specific question based on what you just said, which is that I want to know why you think it's appropriate to disenfranchise five thousand voters.
The law.
Why is that appropriate?
Because we followed the law.
You cannot defend that.
And you can, no, I just defended it.
The law, the law may have given you the option of doing that or not doing that, but why do you, as a leader in this town, think it's okay to take three thousand or four thousand votes away for the people who voted for William Wu? Answer that question. You can't. That's why.
Can I answer it now, or are you going to talk over me?
Answer that question.
Are you going to let me answer it, or are you going to talk over me?
Go ahead. Answer that question.
You're going to let me talk, or are you going to talk over me? Okay, the reason why is because the council majority at the time didn't want to fill the seat to give you any more power. That's why, because you are a terrible leader, and you've proven it. So the council majority, following the law, not anything else, but following the law that we were able to do
Okay.
is to not give you any more power, because you're power hungry. Okay, can I talk? Can I talk? I have the floor. I have the floor. I have the floor, don't I?
It's the whole one.
Okay, you go ahead. This is, so, Councilwoman, see, this is what the problem is. It's okay that the mayor wants to say we do it, but he constantly doesn't let anybody talk. So you go ahead, Mario. Everyone knows when your lips are moving, you're lying, so go ahead.
It's okay for you to steal votes from the public because you don't like me. So that's really not going to carry you very far in the world of politics locally, because, you know, people know that I stand up for them and their rights. And you, however, you go personal first, and then you make your decisions. I don't like you, but I will never let that interfere with making a good decision. You, on the other hand, don't like me, and that's why you vote the way you do, and you just said that. And I hope the public hears that, and I hope people write about that, because you need to be exposed for what you are.
Yeah, someone that follows the law, unlike you, that says it's not on the agenda, even though the bylaws clearly say that nothing should prevent us from making a motion out of meeting, and you and your lackey Bernstein jump right on it. You and Anne Marie, horrible. You, you already started with the name calling. You could, you could say that, and you could talk over me, because that's what you do. Thank you for letting me talk.
Bottom line is, I want that seat filled. Go ahead, Mr.
So, look. The public needs to understand that the mayor enabled the use of tax dollars to launch frivolous retaliatory complaints, investigations, targeting any councilperson perceived as opposition in order to intimidate and silence them. Reports were crafted to support positions with false narratives while setting up the borough to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, money in frivolous settlements. Mr. Cranjack, your behavior has aggressively destroyed the trust and working relationship of every sitting councilperson, with the exception of Ramon Farrow, who just recently resigned. And again, that, that led from various behavior. Now we're at this point, okay, and I just, from, from what, not only what I see, but from what the professionals also see, we're having trouble filling quorum, we're having trouble with quorums. There's a lot of obstruction that's being done. We have a interim Borough Administrator who is leaving in a couple of weeks, and that process has been obstructed. And we've actually lost a couple of very good candidates.
How, Tim, how has that been obstructed?
Well, I, I tell you
Doing a good job, actually. I think it's doing a great job.
He's doing a very good job, but the problem is he's leaving, and we were supposed to bring other people and hire them. For example, how is it obstructed? Well, we had a hiring committee.
Bring them in, and how is not having a quorum my fault? If you people can't get out of bed
I'm not, Mario, I'm not blaming you for that.
Okay, that's it. If you people can't get out of bed and come to a meeting, I can't make this work.
I'm not blaming you for the quorum problem. I'm blaming the council for the quorum problem. And I'm also br- blaming the council, and I'm not going to name individual people, but we were supposed to hire an administrator a long time ago, and that process has failed. We were supposed to hire a clerk a long time ago.
I know, they didn't show up to that meeting. I showed up, you showed up.
No, 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 we, we had a hiring committee. Members of the hiring committee just decided to quit. It, it didn't look good in front of G M A, who we've spent, I don't know, maybe fifteen thousand dollars, so they can bring us candidates. The whole thing has really just turned into a disaster, and honestly, I'm getting tired, me personally. I'm getting tired myself of, of, of just carrying a lot of water for people, because I have spent a lot of time and energy trying to bring people, and, and not even bring people, bring people back. For example, Laura left last, uh, last, uh, last fall, right? She had her reasons for leaving, right? A lot of it was because of the behavior from within Borough Hall. And, 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 and people had to work very hard to try to get them to come back and, and decide to take the job all over again. Here we are a few months later, and, and, and just, and just even, I don't know, three weeks ago, whenever it was, everyone turned down her appointments, right? We fast forward another week, and then all of a sudden, you know, she was completely under fire for what had happened for, uh, with Farrow's seat. It's just the behavior of certain people is just, it, it's getting too much for me personally to deal with. I think that we need, we should bring in another person and fill that seat, and, and for those reasons, I, I would like to see the, the seat filled, and I'll leave it at that.
Glenn's hand is up. Glenn's hand is up.
I'd be recognized, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I was going to say one thing about Tim. Look, I, you proposed three, the, the county committee, I think, proposed three people. I think each of them would be fine council members. I hope that they will serve. I hope that they will get appointed. We need a full council. Now, I don't agree with the process, and I think that's a separate issue, I'll put that aside. But, you know, this council needs to get people on who are going to do some work, because the people who are on it right now, and Riffka, you just joined, it, it's either arguing or doing no work, or not showing up to meetings.
Glenn has his hand up.
I see. You know, Glenn, do you have a camera, by the way?
Well, Mr. Mayor, no, my camera's not working, but, Mr. Mayor, I, I know you keep saying that, but once again, I asked for two meetings a month at the reorganization meeting. No one else wanted.
Show up to one.
And you, 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 like, you really tell me which ones I missed?
You, you've missed the one where we interviewed the candidate for Borough Administrator. You've missed the regular
That was a special meeting.
You, you
How many regular meetings?
Still a meeting. It's still a meeting.
Can I speak?
The one, you missed a regular meeting, I believe, in April. I, I mean, come on, guys, show up.
How many, how many of those meetings did you ask or take a consensus of the, of me, regardless of everybody else, if we were going to be available?
I'm so sorry.
Zero. So now, please let me speak.
I can't change your calendar.
Of course you can. Of course.
You have such a busy calendar. Why don't you tell us when you're available?
You see, this is what the problem is, that it goes down the toilet, because the mayor will give you the floor and then constantly interrupt you. Can I please speak?
Yes, but speak the truth.
Can I please? That is the truth. We've, we've talked about this at the last meeting as well, but you talk about, first off, I'd like to address what Councilman Ketrubas said about quitting a committee, because even though he didn't name names, I'd like to just remind him that people have quit committees all the time, I believe. There's other council members that are still present, and there's other council members that have resigned, that have quit committees. So don't make it seem like anybody quit a committee, like, for the first time, for any kind of reason, because it's, there's a history of people quitting committees.
You're right.
Can I please speak? Can I please speak?
I know, I agree with you.
Can I please speak? I don't care if you agree with me or not. Let me finish.
On a committee, you shouldn't quit.
Let me finish.
It's okay. I agree with you. You shouldn't quit a committee.
Okay, are you done?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. It'd be very, it would be very helpful if you would, the respect that you expect from us, we expect from you. So if you could please sit there and not interrupt, I would great, I would appreciate it. I don't care if you're agreeing with me, and you could laugh about it. That's what makes you the person that you are.
Thank you, yes.
Which is terrible.
I'm very consistent.
Consistently horrible, so
I'm very
The second part is that you mentioned about how the voters were disenfranchised. Looking through my stuff, what I remember is, is that William Rue resigned in August. And then realizing that there would have been an election, you went back and changed his resignation date and actually went to court to fight it. So if anybody disenchance, disenchanced the voters, it was you, because you didn't want to have an election. So don't make it seem like that we disenfranchised, because we could have had an election. Can I please?
You are appointed in the same circumstances.
Can I please speak?
You are appointed
Can I please speak?
Mr. Luciano
Can I please speak?
You are appointed in the same circumstances.
What I'm doing, see, this is where it goes down the toilet.
You were appointed under the same circumstances that William Wu's replacement would have been appointed. But you're a political animal when it comes to doing things the right way, and you don't like me, so you wouldn't appoint someone. Even though you and DeGugorio both got our council because of that.
I wish, I really wish that you would let someone speak.
I just want to be honest with the public, because you aren't.
This is why the meetings go for four hours, because the mayor wants to prolong everybody's comments. Go for five, see, Riffka? You see the mayor's comment there, Riffka? Go for five, and then he's going to blame us, so he made a comment to you, and I don't mean to pick you out, man.
Forward then?
I'm trying.
I don't want you lying to the public.
You want to, there is no lying.
You're lying.
I have, we have a memo here from Councilman Wu in the end of August that you fought, so don't mislead the public, saying that anybody was disenfranchised, because within two months, you could have had an election.
You voted to not fill that seat.
And here you go. When, Mayor, I'm telling you right now, every time you speak tonight, I'm going to speak over you. That's, I don't, because that's the kind of person that you are. We'll make this meeting go five hours.
That's okay. I don't, I don't have to do anything in the morning other than work, like you.
It seems that every time someone makes a good point, you have the habit of interrupting.
Not a good point. It's a lying point.
Excellent point, and the fact that you
It's an accurate, it's a fact. It's an accurate, it's a factual point. It's a factual point.
You both got appointed to council, and you didn't let somebody else get appointed to council under the same circumstances, which makes you very disingenuous, guys. I'm sorry, but don't lie to the public.
You know what, Mayor? The public sees through all of your malarkey. It's getting more, it's getting more evident every day.
Yep, and I like what you guys say.
The mayor says he's transparent. Remember a few months ago when the mayor said that I could have his 200 emails? I got them. And every one of them, 211 emails to Carol McMorro, and 100 of them not including half of the, more than half the council, okay? The only, only including him and Carol McMorro. And I'll show you, here, I'll show you the kind, here's the kind of, here's the kind of stuff. This is the transparency. This is, this is the transparency that Mario Krajec gives us. Look at that.
Oh, look, he does have a camera. Look at him. There he is, he's got a camera. Why don't you let the public see you guys?
Yeah, I got it to work, thank you.
Yeah, look at that. Okay, anybody else want to speak on this item? Is, is there a motion to fill this seat? What, what are we doing, Tim?
Well, we were just having a discussion, so.
I'd like to make a motion to fill the seat with Mitch Kapsaskis.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, got a roll call?
Councilmember Digo Goryo? Councilmember Digo Goryo?
You should have opened to the public before you did this. You should have opened to the public. This is wrong.
That's the mayor.
That you're wrong, Mario. You should open to the public.
Okay, so we did open to the.
No, you did not. You, you had council discussion, you did not open to the public.
I'm sorry, you know what? You're, you're absolutely right. Um, I skipped over that.
There's a motion in a second, you already screwed it up, Mayor.
You know, Tim, could we do this?
Table it.
Table it. Um, I'm sorry, we, I skipped over the public comment. Um, and I should not have done that. Thank you for calling that out. Mr. Mensch, if you're doing your job, you would have reminded me, and you didn't. Uh, Tim, could we table this?
I think procedurally, it's not tabled, he can withdraw his motion, but that's something different.
And I'd also remind the public that it's not appropriate at any point in time for the public to speak out, uh, when it's not.
Right, but it's also not appropriate for you not to remind me.
It's mayor supporter, so it's okay.
Mayor, I apologize for, for not pointing out when you made a mistake. I will make sure to, uh, yeah, do my job better moving forward. I apologize.
Don't go over well, don't go over well, Mr. Mensch.
So, Tim, uh, can, can we?
I'll withdraw the motion, I'll let the public speak first.
Yeah, okay, grab a motion to let the public speak. Yeah, let the public speak, I'm sorry.
I think you gotta make a motion to open to the public, but I'll, I'll remind you that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor? We're, we're open to the public now, and I'm sorry, I melded last night's meeting into this next meeting, and, uh, or, or obviously, we opened last night, not tonight. So if there's anyone from the public, um, please state your name and address, raise your hand. You'll be recognized, and I apologize for missing that part of the agenda. Okay, uh, Miss, Mrs. O'Shea?
Yes, Mary O'Shea, 12 Irving Avenue. I would like to read into the record Resolution 2021-193. Uh, Resolution Regarding the Vacancy of a Council Seat. Whereas William Wu was elected on November 2019 and to the Borough Council for a term from January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2022. And whereas Wu submitted multiple emails to certain Borough officials convincing his intent to resign from the Borough Council on either August 31st or September 2nd, which are attached hereto and incorporated by reference. Whereas on September 12th, the Englewood Cliffs Republican County Committee met to address the vacancy left by William Wu and decided upon three names that it recommended to fill the vacancy, Francis Correa, Kinga Zemecky, and Maria Valari, as set forth in the email dated September 15th that was sent to the Englewood Cliffs Republican County Committee Chair to the Acting Borough Clerk. Whereas the effective date of Wu's resignation was the subject of litigation to the Superior Court of New Jersey and in a case captioned Jersey Englewood Democratic County Committee versus the Borough of Englewood Cliffs bearing docket number B E R L 5925-21. And whereas on the morning of September 30th, the Honorable Robert Wilson, JSC, entered an order denying the plaintiff's request for preliminary injunction relief, including denying plaintiff's application for an order of declaratory judgment, ordering that the resignation of William Wu was effective as of August 31st. And whereas notwithstanding the legal dispute concerning the effective date of the vacancy caused by Wu's resignation, the Borough Council handling of Wu's resignation is governed by the municipal vacancy law, NJSA 40A:16-1 ET SEQ, and specifically NJSA 40A:16-5N. Whereas pursuant to NJSA 40A-16-5, the Borough Council possesses the right, but not the obligation, to appoint a temporary successor to the vacancy. And whereas to this end, in the recent decision of Linden Democratic County Committee versus the City of Linden Appellate Division, August 17, 2021, the Appellate Division affirmed that a governing body's power to appoint a temporary successor pursuant to NJSA 40A-16-5 is optional. And whereas consistent with same, NJSA 40A-1613 provides that if a governing body shall fail to or decline to fill a vacancy in the membership of the governing body by appointment as provided in NJSA 40A-16-4 or 40A-16-5 within the prescribed time by NJSA 40A-16-12, the office shall remain vacant for the remainder of the term or until the election of a qualified successor, as the case may be. Whereas in order to ensure continuity, continuity of government throughout a governing body that is entirely elected by the citizens of Englewood Cliffs, the Borough Council seeks to exercise its discretion by declining to fill the Wu vacancy. Now therefore be it resolved, the Borough Council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, one, the foregoing recitals are incorporated as if set forth at length herein. Two, the Borough Council hereby acknowledges and accepts the resignation of William Wu as a member of the Borough Council and declares a vacancy in the Borough Council resulting in same. Three, the Borough Council hereby declines to fill the vacancy in membership of the Borough Council caused by the resignation of William Wu, providing for same to remain vacant for the remainder of the term or until the election and qualifications of a successor, as the case may be. Four, the resolution shall become effective upon adoption. The provisions of this resolution shall be severable in the event that any portion of the resolution is found to be invalid for any reason by any court of competent jurisdiction. Each judgment shall be limited in its effect only to the portion of the resolution actually adjudged invalid and shall not be deemed to affect the operation of any other portion thereof which shall remain in full force and effect. And that was passed with a motion by Mr. Katrubis, a second by Mrs. Luciano, uh, three eyes Katrubis, Digo Goryo, and Luciano, a nay by, um, Mr. Farrow, and abstention by Mr. Park. Now, that was what was, um, uh, put in, in the resolution, okay? Now, um, that process started on August 31, 2021, when Wu resigned. Judge Wilson declared, ruled on August 31, 2021, and the legal date of the resignation. The County Committee met within the proper timeframe as prescribed within NJSA 19, the voting laws, and as voted, as noted in Resolution 193.
I'm sorry, but we're well over the five minutes.
All right, I only have a tiny little bit. The County Committee met within 15 days as required by law back in September 2021, and the three names that were submitted, which are mentioned in the resolution. The council did not act to choose a name in September 2021, hence giving the County Committee the ability to choose its own name.
Mrs. O'Shea, what's your point?
Kinga Zemecky was sworn in. She was sworn in on October 12th, um, and.
Well, you know that's not valid.
Her seat was declined, she was declined to have her seat. And the County Committee does not get to do this over. You do not get a do-over. It was done according to the prescribed laws.
Time is up, can we please move on?
Of the State of New Jersey, and they do not do it over. You cannot continue to do it over because you don't like it. And Kinga Zemecky should be sitting in that council seat, all right? And you're wrong.
So you're right.
Mrs. O'Shea, where did you get your legal degree from?
I am reading your own resolution.
Don't antagonize the public.
People, people, can I, can I answer, Mary O'Shea?
Uh, yeah, I was just going to say one thing, Ms. Begets, before you go. Uh, look, Kinga was sworn in. This council would not seat her. They kept the seat vacant.
We followed the law.
Um, they disenfranchised people, they want to fill that seat now, but not with Kinga. Uh, look, I can't stop.
That's what I want to tell.
Go ahead, Ms. Begets.
I am a member of the County Committee, okay?
And you should not be once you're on the council, Reva.
Can you please mute Mrs. O'Shea, Laura? Laura, can you please mute Mrs. O'Shea?
Okay. Don't mute anyone.
Okay, uh, so if I can disclose something, what happened there, I'd be more than happy. Am I allowed to do it?
Love to hear it.
No, I'm talking to the lawyer. Now we have to, you know, whatever. Can I disclose from the County Committee?
And Councilwoman, I don't know, uh, specifically what you're, what you're going to disclose, certainly.
You're representing the County Committee.
If it's not attorney-client privilege, uh, you know, I don't know what you're, you're speaking of. I will just remind all the members of the council that you're under no obligation to, uh, this is the attorney, the public's time to comment. You're not under an obligation to respond or.
No, no, I do because I want to put Mary O'Shea's mind in ease. We did offer to put Kinga on the list. Kinga did not want to be, okay? So, uh, I guess you have no case against, uh, the process now.
Well, the reason, uh, she didn't want to.
This is not back and forth, Matt.
Riffka, the reason she didn't want to, and she told you, is because she was already selected and already sworn in. So she feels she needed to be appointed a second time.
Councilwoman Katrubis, take control of your meeting.
Okay, she didn't want to, and that's it.
So, okay, this isn't a back and forth, can we just please move on?
No, I, I guess. It's a healthy, it's a healthy thing to discuss.
The mayor will allow it as long as it benefits, but he wants to progress.
Mr. Luciano, I am the mayor, I control the meeting. When you want to be recognized.
You're not doing a very good job.
Mrs. O'Shea raised some good points, Ms. Begets.
You're not doing a very good job, sir.
Explain a few other items that may be relevant, but, you know, I think the reason why Kinga didn't want to be part of that three was because she was already sworn in.
Correct, correct.
She should be here now.
Look.
She should be sitting up there now.
This whole situation could have been avoided if William Wu's seat was filled just the way Luciano and Digo Goryo came up on council and, and just the way you came up on council, Ms. Begets. But people played games, and you heard Mr. Luciano say, "Well, I wasn't going to vote for anyone because I don't like the mayor." But, so your hatred of the mayor.
Don't tell lies.
Let me finish.
Don't tell lies. If you're going to interrupt people when someone lies, you're lying.
Your hatred of the mayor was bigger than your love.
The only one who said they didn't like someone is you saying you didn't like me.
That's petty and that's thuggery. Okay, Mrs. O'Shea, they are not going to do what you want. Okay, that's clear. You have other recourse and remedies, if you would.
I, I know, and I will explore those other recourse. And I am very disappointed in the situation, okay? Kinga Zemecky should be sitting up there, and nobody else should be appointed.
Councilman Katrubis, control your meeting.
I, it's not his meeting. I, I agree with you, Mrs. O'Shea, but my goal is.
This isn't a back and forth. The resident needs to be muted at this point.
Mr. Katrubis just wants to have his friend up there so he can have an automatic vote.
Mrs. O'Shea, thank you.
Please enforce the five minutes.
My goal is to have a functioning council, and that means.
Please enforce the five minutes.
That means six people on council, okay? That's my goal. Everyone else could fight over who it should be. That's, that's not my fight as mayor. My fight as mayor is to make sure the residents are served and that voters are representative of council, okay? Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to be here? Okay, can I motion to close the public portion?
I'll make the motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
I.
All right, and so, and, and I thank the residents for pointing out that I skipped over that part of the agenda. We have now satisfied that part of the agenda, and, um, we are back to number seven. Mr. Katrubis, you had a motion that you withdrew, do you wish to remake it?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to fill the seat with Mitch Kapsaskis, please.
Okay, to fill the vacant seat of William Wu with Mitch Kapsaskis.
Second.
Councilman Digo Goryo?
Was there a second?
I did.
Councilman Park?
Abstain.
Member Luciano?
Abstain.
Member Park?
Yes.
Member Begets?
Yes.
Council President Katrubis?
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes.
Free to make.
Okay, uh, so I congratulate Mitch. Uh, I hope you know what you got yourself into just now. Um, is, is Mr. Kapsaskis going to be sworn in tonight? Now, can we do that now, or?
If he's in the proper procedure. If he's there, Matt.
He turned his camera on. There you go. Uh, you're muted, sir. You can unmute yourself.
I'm here.
Okay, hi, congratulations, welcome to what I hope will be the.
Congratulations.
Council ever in Englewood Cliffs. And, um, I don't know if the oath of office is available to swear you in right now so you could enjoy the rest of the evening with us as a forwarded councilman.
Well, I think Matt probably has it.
You could dilute the, uh, the bullets coming my way if you want.
Uh, I can, I can swear in, uh.
Or he might be throwing bullets.
It's okay, Mr. Luciano, we all know that you're a one-line, one-line person.
Mayor, we get, we have the oath of office that I can read and swear in, uh.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and do that? Mitch, is that okay?
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
Sir, how do I pronounce your last name?
Kapsaskis.
Kapsaskis, okay. I apologize if I, if I, uh, takes me a day or two to get it right.
No problem.
So what I'll do is I'll read you the oath of, uh, oath of office. Um, I'll do it now this way, and then Laura can provide you with a, uh, with a written form for you to sign for the paperwork, okay?
Sure, thank you.
All right, so, um, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Demetrius Mitch Kapsaskis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.[1679.54]
And the constitution. And the constitution. Of the state of New Jersey. Of the state of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith. And I will bear true faith. And allegiance to the same. And allegiance to the same. And to the governments established. And to the governments established. In the United States. In the United States. And in this state. And in this state. Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people. And that I will faithfully. And that I will faithfully. Impartially. Impartially. And justly. And justly. Perform all the duties. Perform all the duties. Of the office of councilperson. Of the office of councilperson. Of the borough of Englewood Cliffs. Of the borough of Englewood Cliffs. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Councilman. Welcome aboard. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you all. Same here.
Okay, congratulations. I know you've been active in the past with, um, nation, total sports. There will be more of that. Uh, next on the agenda is the, um, unsolicited delivery of newspapers. And I'm not sure who put this on there, but if, if it means stopping all those newspapers that show up at the bottom of all our driveways and up on the streets, I'm all for it. I don't think legally we can do that, though.
It, it was a request from the, uh, health, the, yeah. Dr. Margiata.
Resident.
Public health, yeah. And I agree with him, and I've brought this up when I wasn't on the council. I think what the problem is, and Matt, maybe you need to look into this, I think there is an ordinance that says if we want them to stop, which is crazy to me, the resident physically has to contact the paper delivery person. I've been complaining about this for a very long time. It, it, it just makes our neighborhoods look horrible. I came here as a resident and said, I, I've been cleaning up ten, twenty newspapers caught in the catch basin when they, no one picks them up. I think we need to do whatever we can. Now, I personally, I contacted the paper and told them, don't ever throw it on my yard again, or I'm gonna charge you with littering. So I don't get it on my property, but I don't think it should be on the owners of the resident to tell the newspaper, don't throw it in my yard. To me, it's just littering. And when no one picks it up, it rains, it goes into the catch basin, it's litter as far as I'm concerned. So we need to do whatever we can to, uh, make sure, you know, maybe a, maybe a, maybe like one of those little boo- booths, those little paper things, if someone wants it, put it on the corner, maybe like by, behind, by the woods, behind the upper school, or you know, the, the, where people could drive up and get the, and get the, uh, newspaper, but I think we need to do whatever we can. I agree with the doctor.
So long before, uh, may I be recognized, please?
Yes, sir.
So I, long before I was on council, I'll just mention this quickly. I contacted the paper directly uh, with an idea of, uh, selecting maybe ten newspapers, twenty newspapers, and putting either a five-dollar bill or a ten-dollar bill in there, um, and promoting that. I think that would, it, it was a novel way of getting people to pick them up off the driveway or, uh, to pick them up off the street with the hopes of finding a surprise inside. It was more of a marketing, um, and also an environmental suggestion. Nobody took me up on it, but I do believe it is a problem. There's nothing worse than seeing decaying, uh, newspapers. And I think that if we put our minds to it, we can, um, come up with a, an intelligent solution without just saying you can't deliver anymore, because a lot of, of our older residents love to have that, and I would hate to see, uh, them cut off, uh, from getting, receiving those newspapers. Thank you.
So they, you know what, the.
I like to make a suggestion.
The box idea is fine. You could do, put a box at Borough Hall and, and maybe at the school, or somewhere else where people congregate, at the park. Um, uh, Matt, is there any prohibition to doing that?
No, do, uh, you know, having people put it at the park?
No, uh, to, to, basically tell the news, newspapers that, um, we don't want them doing this unless people specifically reach out to them.
I'll, I'll take a look. This issue's come up before, and it, it's not as straightforward as you would think, but I'll be happy to give the borough an opportunity to take a look at their legal options.
I mean, just so we could get something done tonight, can we just have a resolution that basically says that we're, we're gonna ban it unless you tell us legally we can't? And if people want it, they could contact the newspaper directly, have it delivered?
You, you could certainly do a resolution expressing the borough's dislike of the practice, but if we're banning something, we'd, at a minimum, it'd have to be an ordinance. Assuming we legislatively can do it, we'd have to pass an ordinance, um, to have legal effect, uh, on that topic.
All right, so for the next meeting, can, can you?
Yeah, I'll, I'll put together a resol- at a minimum, a resolution expressing the council's preference, and if we can actually, you know, ban it, I'll, we'll put together an ordinance.
I mean, uh, you know, I'm sorry, we didn't hear from the rest of the council, so is anyone else on council wanna weigh in on this?
I, I, I'm in support, whatever you guys wanna do. If you guys wanna ban it, I'll ban it. If you don't, I'll ta- I'll follow your lead on this. Doesn't matter to me.
Okay, so I, I, I would, I would like to see it banned unless people opt in and then make, give the, uh, newspapers, uh, you know, the availability to have boxes at maybe three or four locations around town where people are, uh.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Um, there is a, an ordinance, uh, on, on, I'm reading here, in the event that any resident of the borough of Englewood Cliffs desires that a newspaper or other written publication not be delivered either temporarily or permanently to that residence home, the resident shall notify the newspaper publication or distribution business by certified mail return receipt requested.
That's what I said. That's what I was leading to. That needs to be rescinded because it makes no sense to me that the resident has to send the newspapers littering on their property, a certified mail to say, stop doing it.
Okay.
Um, so Matt, read, read that ordinance in connection with whatever you're.
Absolutely.
Um, all right. So next on the agenda is review of, of all council committees. I, I don't know who put that on and.
I did, mayor. Because right now we have committees that have like one person on it.
Hold on, Miss Porters has her hand up. Yes, Miss Porters.
I just have a question for Matt. Matt, do we have to take a roll call of the full council?
For, for the newspaper issue?
No, no, no.
No, new council.
For the new seated councilman.
Yeah, that, it's probably a good idea to do that. Thank you.
He's gonna be moving in later.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that now?
Yeah, that's fine.
We need to take a vote on where he's gonna vote, Tim.
I was gonna place him below, under the gas.
I'm sorry, repeat the question.
Are you, uh? I said, are you gonna, are you gonna take a vote on where he votes? Because we did that the last time to change where the vote, where he was gonna vote. We did that with councilwoman.
I don't remember doing that, but if we did that, I suppose we should follow that procedure.
So what, what I would, uh, suggest, the councilman, is that first we just do a roll call recognizing that, um, councilman, uh, Kapsak, uh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna get it right.
Kapsaskis.
Kapsaskis is here. And then I think, uh, Council, uh, Council President Katurbis, uh, last night, there was some discussion about where councilwoman should vote. Um, I would suggest, Laura, that for this vote, you just put, um, the new council member at the very end, and then if, uh, Councilman Katurbis wants to make a motion to change the order, that you go forward from there.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, you can keep him at the very end. It's fine.
May Krenjak? Member Digo Goryo?
Abstain.
Yeah, it's a, it's a count if you're here or not.
It's a roll call. Members present.
If you're not sure where you're at, we aren't.
Sorry, I was reading something.
Mayor's gotta be snarky.
Member Luciano?
Present.
Member Park?
Yes.
Member Begets?
Yes.
Member Kapsaskis? I think you muted, sir.
You're muted, Mitch.
Yes, yes, sorry, guys, yes.
Tony Manch?
Still here.
Interim administrator, rats.
Still here.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we go back to the review of committees, I know I brought this up, I brought it up to the council president, and I think that we need to review what the committee assignments are because we have certain committees after resignations and that only have one or two members that really need to be cleaned up. I mean, I don't have any control over it. The majority does, so, but I would just implore you to, to look at it, and, uh, let's start using our committees.
Hey, and Miss Porters, can you give us, um, after the meeting, a list, tomorrow's fine?
Sure.
A list of all the committees and who's on them right now.
Sure, I'll email it to you.
Thanks. Thank you. Uh, next up is Resolution twenty-two dash one twenty-two.
Yes, that's mine too. I'd like to make a motion to reclaim the hundred thousand dollar payment that was made to Cadwalader for some farcical investigation that we never even received an investigation report on.
I second that motion.
Well, okay, discussion. So that, that's not true, actually. Uh, you were briefed at the August eleventh meeting. Uh, I know you were, because there was also a straw poll and, and you, I believe, abstained.
Straw poll. Can you, can you tell the public about that straw poll?
Yeah, there was a straw poll, um, and.
What was that straw poll for?
So that, so that's all I wanna say is, and how would you want to reclaim a hundred thousand? You wanna spend a hundred thousand to reclaim a hundred thousand? Is that what you want?
Well, we'll only spend a hundred thousand if we hire Cadwalader. If we use our borough attorney, it'll probably cost significantly less.
Or, or if you, if you hire one, it'll cost.
I think that payment was ille- I think that payment was improper. They were not, we hired an unlicensed attorney who we should not have even hired because they were, we couldn't even go into a contract with them in the state of New Jersey, but that was the mayor's doing. So now my motion is to reclaim it.
So there's a discussion. Just to inject, uh, a notion of honesty into this discussion, just for the novelty of the idea that there'd be something honest said on the subject, they were hired initially to conduct an investigation of the four law firms that basically misrepresented this town.
You mean the law firm that we just lost the case on?
No, let me finish.
The malpractice case that you lost.
You know, you, so, let me finish. They were hired to do an investigation, and it was capped at a hundred thousand dollars. And they did that, and it wasn't, they weren't appearing, they were free to investigate. You could have hired an, an investigator from Timbuktu if you wanted to. And, and you don't have to be licensed in New Jersey to do that investigation, and they did a very good job. And then they came back to the council uh, with, with their findings, and on August eleventh, they, they basically introduced the notion of asserting claims. So, Mr. Luciano.
Councilman Katurbis, did you ever get an investigation report, or did the mayor say the investigation report was the, was the actual complaint? Because none of us, none of us, not David, not.
Karen Dyer.
Not Tim, not anyone got an investigation, maybe the mayor, but not anybody else.
Karen Dyer, at the August eleventh closed session, and you could look at the closed session minute notes, went through their findings and, and what I would refer to as probable cause for bringing a complaint, uh, which this council heard, and, and you were there. Whether or not you were listening, I don't know, but.
No, I think I was put out of the meeting for the presentation.
No, I don't think you were, actually.
Oh, I think I was.
Presentation, okay.
I was, I was either muted or put out of the meeting.
Does anybody else wanna discuss this before we vote on it?
Yeah, I, I, I would like to say something. I mean.
Basement, the basement.
The reason the payment was made was because we followed the borough attorney's advice, if I'm not mistaken. And we were well within our rights to pay it. They put it, they put it one way.
You only see.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm.
Mitch is, Mitch is, Mitch needs to.
Sorry, guys, I'm, I'm muted, so.
In no ways. So, um, we were well within our rights to pay it, one way or another, something was gonna get paid. Um, that's why I just like to make a motion to table this. Unless, unless Mr. Mens is gonna dispute anything that I'm saying, so.
Is there a second to table?
Mr. Mens, did you get an investigation report?
I'm sorry, there's a motion to table. Is there a second?
Yeah, but there's no second, so you can't interrupt our discussion because you're looking for a second.
Luciano, shut it down for a minute. Is the motion to.
Mayor, shut it down for a minute.
There was the second.
The reason why you wanna shut it down is because you don't wanna talk about it.
No, no, I, I did talk about it, actually.
It needs to be flushed out.
You just heard me explain it. All right, now, let's have a, let's have a roll call on table.
The reason, the reason why we paid a hundred thousand dollars because they threatened to quit.
Running for the hill. We're talking about the taxpayer money.
Mr. Digo Goryo, there's a motion and a second and a vote. Miss Porters, please conduct the vote.
Member Digo Goryo?
Is this for tabling? No.
Yeah.
No.
Member Luciano? Member Park?
Yes.
Member Begets?
Yes.
Member Kaps- Kapsaskis?
Uh, I'll abstain.
Mr. Mens is, is, with all due respect to councilwoman.
Yes.
To vote when she wasn't here for that initial payment.
Shut it down, Mr. Luciano.
It's a legal question, mayor, and I have the right to ask.
We're in the middle of a vote.
I have a right to ask a legal question.
When you voted, no one interrupted you.
Question, mayor.
Mr. Luciano, when you voted.
Have a right to ask a legal question, mayor.
Kubus gets to vote now.
I, I said yes to table.
Okay.
Mr. Mens, can you please answer my legal question now?
I'm sorry, we're still voting. Is it three, three?
It's three, two, and three, yes.
I'm sorry, Mitch, I apologize.
Is it three, three, Mr. Mens?
Yeah, the abstention acts, you know, the effective as a no, so the mayor.
So then I get to vote. We table, yes. Move on.
So, Mr. Mens.
You're not recognized, Mr. Luciano.
It doesn't matter. I have the right to ask our legal advice.
Address the chair.
This is my. Mr. Mens, can you answer the question?
Address the chair.
Okay, I'll, let me stand up. Mr. Mens, can you give us legal advice on that?
Yes, the councilwoman can vote. There's nothing that prevents her from voting on that, uh.
Okay, consent agenda, this, next on the agenda, consent agenda, all consent i- agenda items will be enacted with a single motion. Any items requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. Uh, so there's twenty-two dash one twenty-three tax appeal settlement. Rachi Mohammed and Anan Siddiqui, Seventeen Skyline Drive. Twenty-two dash one twenty-four tax appeal settlement, Manfe and Joan M U, Fifteen Lynn Drive. Twenty-two dash one twenty-five Gregory and Yagenya Frelicom, Eleventh Barbara Drive. Twenty-two dash one twenty-six liquor license renewals for twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three. Twenty-two dash one twenty-seven review and reform of Oprah. Twenty-two dash one twenty-eight appoint junior fireman Michael Liang, and, and I thank Michael for volunteering to do that. I think that's pretty awesome. Uh, so is there a motion to move the consent agenda?
I make a motion to move the consent agenda.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
If there's anything, wait, wait a second. You just said if there's anything that you need to be removed, I wanna remove something.
What would you like removed?
I would like to respectfully request that twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six be on the consent agenda and twenty-seven and twenty-eight be separate.
Okay, so.
I know you wanna rush through it because you, you don't follow Robert's rules, but I appreciate it.
Okay, that's okay. That's fine. Everything except twenty-seven and twenty-eight will be on the consent agenda. Uh, can I have a motion for that?
I'm, I'm sorry, what's twenty-seven and twenty-eight?
They're gonna be voted separately. That's reform of Oprah and twenty-eight is appoint junior fireman.
Okay, so, uh, I'll make a motion to move everything except for those two items. That's what Ron wants.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, can I have a roll call?
You're muted there, uh, Ms. Laura.
Laura.
Sorry. Member Digo Goryo?
Yes.
Member Luciano?
I am gonna recuse myself.
Is there a reason?
Personal reason.
You need to explain to the council what you're.
I don't need to explain anything. I'm recusing myself for personal reasons.
Let the, let the record reflect that there's a recusal without a reason given.
Member Park?
Yes.
Member Begets?
Yes.
Member Kapsaskis?
Am I allowed to, to, to vote on this, uh, Mr. Mens?
You could vote on it if you want.
Okay, yes.
Councilman Book, Councilman Katurbis?
Yes.
I have a motion, uh, to approve one twenty-seven review and reform of Oprah.
I make the motion to review for, for, for the Oprah, uh, resolution.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Can you explain who put this on?
Can you explain what it is? Sorry.
So, mayor wants everybody to explain everything except.
In the package, who put it on?
It, it was something that we asked, uh, at the agenda committee meeting, that we could put this one on.
So, Councilman Katurbis, do you know where this came from?
Yeah, s- so Laura, can you please, or Mr. Mens, can you please give some, some insight to what, uh, uh, from what I understand, a lot of various different municipalities are adopting this resolution to make, to, to bring some sort of reform to Oprah. If I'm incorrect, uh, please correct me. Uh, and if you can just give the council some insight on what that reform is, Mr. Mens, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, thi- this is a, a sample, a form resolution, which a lot of miss, this is not something unique to Englewood Cliffs that is being passed, calling on the, uh, the state to look at updates to Oprah. A lot of it's dealing with what was called Daniel's Law. Um, Daniel's Law was, after a judge, someone was killed, uh, now that requires a whole nother level of.
Oh, okay.
Redacting, um, certain individual documents for people who are related to the judiciary. Um, and it's also pointing out that Oprah is, in general, is incredibly burdensome for records custodians. And while it may be well-intended that the operation of that, especially a lot of Daniel's Law, has caused another layer of undue burden to records custodian. So this is asking the state to implement a study to look at Oprah and found the state and potentially update the legislative scheme handling Oprah.
Uh, Mr. Mens, if I may, um, there's a lot more to the, uh, that has, first off, has any of the council members read the resolution?
I did not read.
Okay, would anybody else wanna comment on that since, you know, I, I read, I read it, and I, we're gonna vote on it, so, um, the people that are gonna vote on it tonight who haven't read it is very interesting to me, but, um, the. Why is that interesting? Because usually when you vote on something as a councilperson, you should at least have read it or have knowledge of it. That's my own personal opinion. I don't need you to, I don't need you to editorialize anything.
Somebody read it or didn't read. Somebody read it or didn't read it.
I don't. That's why, did you hear my question? Did you read it, Mayor?
It's fine.
Did you read it, Mayor?
People make their own decisions.
Did you read it, Mayor?
You unfortunately make a lot of
That's what I thought. So I think there's a lot in there, and I think that, I forget the the young man's name, but I think that was the federal judge that son was killed because someone went to their house, which is a terrible tragedy. But I think there is a I'm sorry, ma'am.
It's a she. She's the judge.
Yes, but her son was killed.
I know, but right, the husband
Yes, that's what I said. Her son was killed. The judge's son was killed, but I think there's a lot of things in there that if it was just plain saying we wanna have a study, but there's things in there that say you must be a New Jersey resident, you can't do it for this reason, and I'm one hundred percent in agreement that something needs to be done with Oprah, because we probably have the worst Oprah people, of someone from Mawa that that has asked for hundreds and hundreds of emails, but that don't even live in town. Actually, I think they're even the one that's that the address is Grist Mill, that's, you know, the the Republican, the the Republican person from that runs from from Mawa, but I think that the, I think the, the reason why I'm gonna vote no on is because I think there's certain things in there that really Oprah's a good thing, and I think that Oprah does need to be reviewed, but I think that the the wording of the resolution is a standard form that came out by the League of Municipalities that just wants everybody that's a member to vote on it. So I think that I would implore that, you know, except for the mayor, because he don't vote, but anybody who's gonna vote on it, to please read it, because I would say that, you know, what we support, I think we should create our own resolution that says we do agree that Oprah needs to be reformed, but I think that some of the clauses inside that resolution are overly broad and would hinder people from actually doing what Oprah is meant for, not like the not like the crazy train that we have here that people just, you know, Oprah and caused us heartache, but so that's why I'm gonna vote no.
I never got it. Where is it? Can we table that?
Do you wanna table it? Yeah.
Yes, can we table it?
We could table it so everyone can review it.
Right.
Focus. I'm not sure why Mr. Luciano was
I'll make a motion to table it.
Bringing in unrelated
I I wasn't clear. I wasn't clear.
Bringing in some some disparate facts and
Disparate. That's your friends, disparate.
No, it's English, actually. So will the table that begets?
Yeah, we'd like the motion to table it.
Okay, do a second?
Second.
On favor, table, let's have a roll call, so we're clear.
Member Degagorio?
No.
Not a table?
Table, I I I totally agree with with Councilman Luciano. It makes a lot of sense. And I agree with every every disparate fact that he brought in. Being victim of that, so, but I do believe that we need to
By that person from Mawa, too, right? I believe. That disparate fact that it was someone from Mawa. Oh, that's right.
I forgot. Mawa was disparate, but I guess it is.
I I think it's difficult for you guys to dish it up and not be able to take it, but that's life. Okay, keep going, please.
No.
Degagorio, about it now.
Yes, Member Park?
Well, Luciano's next, isn't he?
I think Is it tabling or what is?
The tabling.
Okay, yes.
Member the Gats?
Yes.
Member Capzaskis?
Yes.
Council President Katurbis?
Yeah, you can table. Yes, the table.
Did Luciano vote?
Yes.
He did.
Okay.
And make you here.
It's tabled. Okay, so next up is the appointment. This is twenty-two dash one twenty-eight. Appoint junior junior fireman Michael Liang. This is to appointment to the Englewood Cliffs Fire Department.
I make the motion to
I make the second.
Yes, second.
Councilmember Degagorio?
Yes, and congratulations, and thank you.
Yes, and I wish we had more more firefighters that would come to the fire department.
Member Park?
Yes.
Member the Gats?
Yes.
Member Capzaskis?
Yes.
Councilmember Katurbis?